I've called a regular meeting, Robson County Commission, November seventeenth in order. Done announced about the caps and cell phones. County Commissioners, if you will, let's do roll call. Who we waiting on? Bob? Got Bob now? Doc Martin?
I hit it. I hit it again.
Okay, we got twenty-three present. One absent. I declare, we do have a call. Then we got two. She always counts me.
No, you're not absent.
Chair now recognizes Commissioner Bob Stroud for invocation, followed by the pledge to the flag.
God would battle with new prayer. Dear Father, we just come before you today. We are thankful for this day. We thank the opportunity that we have and the friends that we have. To be able to just gather here to discuss the business of our, of our communities in our county. Lord, we are blessed with that freedom. It's all a gift from you. God, tonight, I thank you for our first responders in this county and the sacrifices that they make to protect us and to help us and serve in our communities. Lord, just ask you to be with us as, as we go into this meeting time tonight, that you would just give us wisdom. Discernment, just always help us to do things in a way that please and honor you, Lord. As we leave this place, just help us to remember that we always are witness and, and just a representation of honoring Christ, Lord. All we do, we ask in your name.
Amen.
A pledge lightly.
Thank you, Commissioner Stroud. Misses, from our previous meeting, I got the minutes in your package. Need a motion to approve. Got a motion by Roberts and second by Summers. All in favor, say aye. Anybody oppose? The minutes are approved and filed. Thank you. My communications, first, let me say my pastor's sitting right over there. I welcome him tonight. Yeah, tell him, Ed, I come to church, don't?
Yeah, you know.
Maybe a lot of people don't go because I do, but, but I do go, don't? Yeah, I appreciate you being here, brother. Uh, my communications, uh, schools want me to read. You're invited to join us to recognize and celebrate the Tennessee reward schools in Robson County Friday, November twenty-first at twenty twenty-five. Transportation will be provided and leave the central office no later than eight o'clock. Park around the rear for the parking. And I guess it's gonna be all day, way it sounds, Doc? Half a day? Okay, how many schools we looking at?
Open eight. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Open five.
Five. Good. Thank you, Dr. Weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to recognize Pierre Alexander with the Robson County Sports Alliance. Would you like to come up a minute?
Yes, sir.
Tell us what you're about. If you remember, he was here last year.
Yes, sir. I was almost two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yes, sir. Well, I know some of y'all might not recognize me, but I had on, and so it must be something serious if I'm not, if I'm not wearing one, but. With that being said, um, thank you all for having me, Mayor Vogel, for having me this evening. It's a serious matter or an important matter to my organization. And like Mayor Vogel said, I was here two years ago, just asking for the blessing, the humble blessing of this commission for a small flag football league in our town. Well, that small flag football league has grown tremendously. We've done a lot in this community, built a lot of relationships, done a lot of events. One in particular, Kangal Crawl, has been an event that draws people from all over the Southeast to come here. We've done food drives. We've done Christmas. We've done all the types of things for, for the community. But in that growth and over that time of growth, we had to sit back and take a second and say, where do we see ourselves in five to ten years? We sat down with a nonprofit consulting agency. They made us, they challenged us, asked that question. And to answer that, we said, well, we want our own home. We want somewhere that we can really, really put our mission to work. And that's why I'm here to tell you guys about Generations Next Academy, I mean, Generations Next, uh, campus. The pillar of that whole, the anchor of that whole campus is gonna be a FEMA safe room that can house or protect sixteen hundred and twenty-two people in this community. We all know that tornadoes aren't stopping coming. This corridor that's coming from the west is coming closer to the east. And our community needs something that can house a public thing. So with that being said, Generations Next Academy also will have our biggest daycare generations, uh, Generations Next Academy, nonprofit, affordable childcare for the community. It's also gonna have more football fields, basketball courts. Guys, like I said, our flag football league has grown to almost expecting four hundred people in, four hundred kids in the, in the spring. With that growth, it's gonna, it's coming the opportunity for us to bring some of the tournaments, some of the events that NFL flag offers, a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of things. So with that being said, I'm not here to ask for money or anything. Unless the county has some, they wanna give us. But I'm here to get the blessing again and talk about, you know, to, to form you guys for the first time. This, no one has really been told about this. It's the first time we went public with this FEMA safe room project. And just again, ask for your blessing. I will say that the property that we're doing all this on, if you guys aren't familiar with us, we did move to Branford, the Branford area. And right next to that is where we wanted to do this. And we're grateful enough to be able to work with the Vesper Villas project in order to allot ten acres for all of this. As you guys could see on some of the diagrams and, and pictures in front of you all, where all that is gonna come out of. So, um, I welcome any questions. I don't wanna go over my time. I think I got, I might've went over that already, but.
Bloody ass bad a clerk there.
I don't have.
Okay.
All right. So if anybody got any questions about it and, and what we do and everything we've done, I'm sure it'll take me hours to tell you all the stuff our organization has done in, in the two hours.
They don't have any.
Fundraising?
Yes. Um, the grant itself is a five-point-eight million dollar grant, so there is money that we have to raise. It won't pay for basketball courts. It won't pay for all the other courts and stuff. It pays for a fortress. That's all. I'm sorry. A concrete building is what it pays for, but yes, we will be doing some fundraising. We will have some, uh, campaigns and all that going on. So again, this is the first time that you guys are privileged right now to be able to hear, hear about this, uh, this project in itself. But you got any questions?
Well, and being donated.
We are working out. Working that out. All that's being worked out. Yes, sir. It's been a lot. It's already been put into the plans for us to do it there. So that, those types of logistics and stuff are being worked. Yes, sir.
I don't see where the racquetball court is on this.
I know, I know. I, I hear, I heard you play yourself pickleball and racquetball. So there's some space for possible basketball, tennis and stuff on there, but, uh, yes, we will, we will look out for you, mister. So type of.
Pickleball.
Pickleball. That's what, that's.
I just wanna speak, uh, this is in District Twelve, which is, uh, which you got represented. It's a, it's a welcome addition to, uh, definitely needed. It'd be an added concept that this whole community would benefit from it. Also, the storm shelter would be a great asset to the community where no one has to go in a case of a storm in that area. So, uh, uh, you have the blessing of our county commission of District Twelve, and, uh, I've talked to some people in the community. There is no opposition to having this in our community. So I thank you for your effort. I thank the people that, uh, involved in all this, and, uh, I hope we get the blessing from these commissions.
Mr. Hedy?
This is the grant money?
Yes, ma'am.
You said, and, and I may have just misheard it. Is it for the safe room itself?
It just pays for the safe room. Yeah, the idea came about, we were talking about how do we get this done? And we were, you know, I'm a, and I wanna say this probably came from, uh, my background. I'm a first responder. I'm a firefighter full-time. And I wanna say God just put that on my heart to say, hey, what if we use, you know, hazard mitigation grant? You know, we hear people posting all the time, hey, where's the nearest safe room? Where's the nearest shelter at, you know? And though I really can, you know, sometimes can't answer that, so.
So everything else would have to be, the money will have to be raised, donated?
Yes, yes, everything else. Like I said, I won't pay for basketball goals. I won't pay for a gym, you know, as far as a, a court on the floor and all the other stuff for our sports, but, uh, it'll pay for that building. And to me, that's, that's the most important part.
And what about the traffic, the school traffic? I know it's under next to the school. I mean, what about all of that? Is it gonna, how will it impact all that, uh, all the school traffic?
Absolutely. So one of the, one of the people that we are working with is, is EMA, Emergency Management. We have to come up with a evacuation plan. And so some of that is included in it, how the flow, how the flow of traffic goes, but those are some more conversations. When we started just about a year ago, we had met with Chase, um, Chance, Chance Holmes, and said, hey, we're gonna have this. One of the things we have to do, FEMA does require, is come up with that hazard mitigation plan.
Mr. Thompson?
Where are you at in the process and when are you looking to open the doors?
So we sent the grant off in September, September fifth. We were, we're not supposed to send it off till January, February, but FEMA called and FEMA called and said, let's get it in here September fifth. So that's a good sign. They're telling you to send it. So ours opened doors, takes a little while to do some of the architecture and geotech and all of that, so preferably, hopefully, within the, the next two years, I'd say. If not, three years down the line. There's no time limit they give you to build. They wanna make sure that money is set aside or allocated. That's probably why they wanted us to send it in earlier, so, um, but it's up to us. Yeah, I'd say two to three years will be nice to have the doors open.
The safe room is the first thing that's gonna happen?
Yes, that's phase one. Yes, ma'am. Phase one is the safe room.
And once that money's allocated, it's allocated. It'll be there in three years if you need it.
Yep, it's there. We can, we have it. Five-point-eight. We are responsible for twenty-five percent. That's not a hundred percent grant, seventy-five, twenty-five grant. So we will have to raise the twenty-five to go there. But again, safe room is the first step, and then we'll start doing the rest, the daycare center, all the rest of the stuff after that. Now, as God says, hey, here's the rest of y'all do it all at one time, but.
Lee, do you have something you wanna ask?
I do. Uh, two questions.
Yes, sir.
What's the estimated cost for doing what you have proposed? I know they're gonna give you five-point-eight million. Have you all got far enough down the road to see what the land's gonna cost with the other buildings and things like that, or is it too early in the process?
It's a little too early in that part, yeah. We know how much the safe room's gonna cost.
Right.
So again, we just decided then that being phase one, and when the daycare stuff starts to come, um, we'll start pricing all that stuff out. So again, it'll be, it'll.
And then the second question is, uh, you talk about the people that can be helped by this safe room. Talked about how many players that you have in a five-year window. How many families do you think you can positively affect?
Yeah, so, um, with our numbers growing, looking at four, it seems, the trend seems to be every spring we get about a hundred more kids. And then we all know this growth is happening all around us. We know it's coming. And so our, our theory is this, you know, everyone's talking about roofs and, and all the other commerce and stuff that's coming into town. But I haven't really heard much about what's gonna happen for the kids, like what more, what more programs, what more opportunities we're gonna bring. So we're trying to do something that, again, affects that. And then the number's growing for NFL flag. Like I mentioned, there's a regional tournament that they host all around, the Titans Regional Tournament. We'd love to have, bring that here. That's, that's an opportunity to have thousands and thousands of kids and come, you know, bring that here. That's, you know, hotel costs, that's all that, that comes. So that's, so again, as far as affecting more kids, our, our mission is growing and we're seeing more kids playing our programs and be a part of our programs and touch more kids, so. In five and ten years, I, what'd you say, five, five years? Yeah, we may be closer to like a thousand or something kids, yeah, at that point, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Mr. Dars?
Oh, how many acres you talking about?
Ten, a little over ten acres. And we're, we're looking to, to expand to other aspects of Robson County. The, the notion has come up to have satellite games or satellite sites throughout the county. Maybe try something, you know, White House, Portland, Greenbrier, start, you know, having that stuff as well, but that, this will be our home, home base.
Mr. Roberts?
Um, I know y'all have a board of directors, but, um, with all y'all's funds and everything, who oversees y'all's funds?
We have a finance committee that oversees, yes. We have our treasurer that's here, and then a couple of other members of our finance committees oversees that, yes.
Kals?
So if a person wanna make a donation, it's, it's charitable, so we gotta follow through, see your way.
Yes, so when we, I think when I presented two years ago, we didn't have that, and I got the letter, five-one-zero-three letter. Maybe a week right after that. And then so we went through the process with the state, too. A lot of people don't do that part. They just do the federal tax ID number, but they don't go the next step and get the charitable license with the state, too. So that's what we have. We've had that since we've been, you know, since we've been a thing. So we've always kinda kept that in good standing, Secretary of State, that too.
Or the government, uh, the state monitors that and makes sure.
Yes, yes. And so just so everybody's clear, whenever, uh, uh, five-one-zero-three, a nonprofit dissolves, all of your asset goes to the state. They take it, right? So it's not like if everything, you know, fails, then we just, nobody has it. It all gets surrendered, all down to every single basketball or football. All goes to, all to the state.
Mr. Hogan?
I have one of those children that plays, a nephew of mine that plays flag ball.
Yes, sir.
Flag football he loves.
Yes. Yeah, we, we've been, we've been blessed to give out a bunch of scholarships. We've been blessed to have a lot of kids. Kids play with us, our, our coaches, everything down to our, our coaches. That's your, that's your fundamental part of, you know, instilling, instilling, uh, instilling into the kids is, is your coaches, so we've been glad to, glad to hear that.
Bobby, you are endorsing this?
Yes.
Mr. Dars?
If he gonna keep growing by thousands, I might have to have some help cooking, cook hot dogs.
Yeah, yeah. He comes out, cooks, cooks for us, and he did that at our evaluation. We had an evaluation day and he cooked, I don't know how many hamburgers.
Games.
Yeah, sir.
That's why, yeah.
A lot of hot.
All right, Commissioner, uh. Summers, now?
I, uh, it's real personal to me, like, where I grew up at, I like field, I used to, uh, take my BB gun and shoot rabbits. Like, I, like what y'all done, like, what y'all doing is very much a blessing to this community, man, like. He's gonna understand, like, what's really, it's making us, like, what is, what this is, like, it's truly blessed. Uh, we appreciate you. No, you're not from here. You're friends playing. We, but we appreciate everything you're doing for us, even though you're a Georgia fan.
All right, you didn't have to put that part in there. All right, anyone else?
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you said the safe room would be first. Who's going to be building the streets, uh, out here past, uh, to, that meets at Doris Avenue from the school and, and pass right past there where the state?
It'll be, it'll be a joint effort, I'd say. Yeah, um, we'll be responsible for some. Um, we spoke with the, you know, development company. They'll be doing some, and then I think, I don't wanna speak, I misspeak, but I don't know if the school system has anything to do with that or not, as far as, as far as aroundabout or the stuff with school street or stuff, but I don't wanna speak too far into that. But I know it would be a joint, a joint, uh, thing, unless the county just wants to pay. Or the city, yeah.
Does City of Springfield helping at all?
Uh, they know. Well, again, you guys are, you know, first ones we've, as far as commission goes, our body of, uh, government body that, that is, knows about it. But the city manager does know. There are some council, uh, aldermen, aldermen that do know. But, um, I have not presented to them yet. As far as them offering anything towards it, I have not. I, I haven't got it. So again, again, this is the first, yeah. So tomorrow goes public to the world.
Good job.
Well, you've been very informative, and, and you have answered every question, and I, I thank you for your representation and thank for those that came with you to represent our community and effort that they make also.
Yes, sir.
Keep us posted on your fundraisers.
We will, we will. Yes, ma'am. That's it. I appreciate you guys, everyone, again. Thank you, you, thank you.
Chair's to recognize. Here's to recognize, uh, Commissioner Robson. Pierce, he's got announcement coming from EMS committee. You probably can see it, but they stand up and say.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just, uh, December eleventh. That right this week, December eleventh at five-thirty, the fairgrounds, EMS, EMA dinner. We would love all y'all to come out and join us.
It's second Thursday at five-thirty.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think last but not least, um, there was a request made from County Commission about our development fees. We, you know, we're kinda like everybody else in the mid-state. Are we there where we ought to be? Michael Skipper, GNRC's, comes in, um, zoning Thursday night to represent their findings. And I re, I think I recommend everybody try to make it if you can. I was impressed with what they found, and they're gonna send it to us, and, uh, I'm gonna tell you, GNRC is very important if you use it. I encourage all cities to use it. You pay them a fee, and they're, uh, they can do things for you that, they've done this, it, it would took a lot of work for us to done that, and I appreciate that. Thursday night now, gang, it's, it's zoning. I think that's all I've got. Oh, yeah, I want to recognize all the football teams still playing and the ones that just got put out. They're representing Robson County, well, well represented. Thank you, Badam Clerk. Okay, um, is any public comments or anything about what's on the agenda other than zoning, Badam Clerk?
No.
No one wants to speak? Okay, we'll move to our reports. Your package is, um, is a list of reports. We'll start with trustee. Any questions or comments? Animal control, any questions or comments? Folks, if, uh, you need a Christmas present, several down there, and I'm talking about some good ones, too. I'm, you know, I had my stay of the county. I don't think none of y'all came, but anyway. I told everybody that, um, there are people that you and Doc down there, their love is unconditional. You don't find that much in today's world. Take a chance and go down and get you a buddy. EMA, any questions or comments? Planning, any question, comments? Veteran services, any questions or comments?
Everybody needs to read that veteran service report.
Yeah, I think, um, I need to tell y'all, we've got forty-four hundred and twelve veterans in Robson County.
About that, yes, sir.
Yeah, they brought in over fifty million dollars the last year for veterans in Robson County. And now that's a big feat, that's a big feat. Appreciate the work y'all do. Air Cross and Hall, I mean, trust me, there's people going in and out of there all day long. That office was, uh, was a blessing to you. It was. All right, highway department, any questions or comments? Fire, any questions or comments? Solid waste, any questions or comments? To show you how we're growing, we're, we're going, we're getting over around three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a month shipping trash out of Robson County. EMS, any questions or comments? Last, finance, any questions or comments? Any none? You four passing the reports, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody against?
Against.
Okay, give me a motion, Roberts. I got a motion by Roberts, second by Doc Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody, um, against the motion, the report's been filed? Pick up. Oh, moving, report's our file. Okay, the chair now recognizes Commissioner Bob Stroud, representing the nominating committee.
Bill Commissioners, Badam Clerk, Chair, distinguished guests, hey, we bring you, uh, before you die, a couple of performance. Nine-one-one committee, we are, uh, appointing Blake Pierce to replace Chance Holmes. And on the, uh, records committee, we are, uh, bringing, found in to replace Commissioner Megan Sutt, who left the commission. That's it.
And second, had a second by Commissioner Bubba Dars. All in favor? Anybody got any questions for Bob before you vote?
Questions?
Our question being called. Before that, you wanna voice vote, suits me. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Those nominations are now in place. Okay, at this time, we move into our public hearing for planning zoning. Pam, if you and Hunter would like to come up, please. This time, the, the public becomes part of the court. You've got three minutes to speak. Come up, state your name and address. Hunter, take off.
Resolution number one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-eight-nine. Todd Bowlinger, on behalf of Brent Neal, Tony Neal, Mary Beth Hodge, and Brett Piles, plus a zone twenty-three-point-eight-nine acres from AG two to R forty, located on Betts Road, tax map one-one-three. Parcels two-zero-four-point-zero-zero and two-zero-four-point-zero-two, tenth voting district. The planning commission did not recommend by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, anybody here to speak on that resolution?
Cam Suggs.
Thanks, Cam Suggs. I live at twenty-four ten, Millithane, Greenbrier, Tennessee. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come and I can speak on behalf of the Tony Neal family and, uh, me as being the one that's buying this property. Brought it through the zoning, uh, and got turned down, and I wanted to bring it to one of the commissioners to just be able to look into this a little bit more in detail, uh, of not just that it's not in the growth development, uh, map, but this is also zero-point-six miles away from the growth map. Everything around this, uh, piece of property is zoned R forty. Uh, stuff that is not zoned R forty, uh, I have people that have signed, that live there, standard there for it, and I, I, if you didn't get a packet, I made them there on the corner there, uh, just to have a little bit more detail in this. Uh, I'm zoning, I'm requesting to have it zoned R forty from AG two, uh, to be able to get, uh, not twenty-four lots out of the twenty-four acres, but only ten. Uh, I've talked to the city and I've got ten water taps. I'll be doing all the infrastructure work, uh, for the water line. Uh, there will be no, uh, work to the roadway because it's a state highway and it doesn't need to be improved. The land, uh, right now and has been since I've lived in the area, has grown up. It's, it's not even used for farming. Uh, it's just grown up with a lot of trees, and so I'm wanting to clean it up. Uh, I own the, the thirty-eight acre parcel next door, uh, that's zoned R forty. Uh, and if anybody has driven by there, you'll notice that I improved that land also, and I put in a fence and a gate and, uh, tracked that property up into bigger tracks. The reason why I'm asking for ten, um, lots out of this is because of the cost of the infrastructure and the cost that the Neal family is wanting. Uh, I bought the Neal family house, uh, at auction a couple of months back, um, and with me owning the property at the back and the side, it's already zoned R forty, uh, I would appreciate looking to consider to pass this to be zoned R forty and with it being a state highway, um, three miles from the Chick-fil-A and, um, and you'll see, I drew out the map into the growth development map is. Appreciate your vote as your commission, and I felt obligated to come tonight just because, uh, y'all support, um, me and because I'm a citizen of Robson County, and I appreciate your time and looking into this. Thank you.
And thank you.
Todd Bowlinger.
Todd Bowlinger, eleven ninety-nine Fisher Drive, Greenbrier. I'm the surveyor on the project. I just kinda reiterate, you know, what Cam said, we're not looking to do twenty-four lots, ten track. Probably eight or nine of the tracks will meet RP eighty, but we have to get some smaller tracks on the foot, front to, uh, offset the cost of the water line. He'll be extending the water line at his cost. Also, uh, we'll be putting a private drive in. There will only be a couple of driveways off of, you know, two fifty-seven. You know, be a private drive of one-inch for the tracks in the back. Like you said, Mr. Suggs owns the thirty-eight acres, and I, I did that for him also, and we put it up in five-acre tracks. And it's all zoned R forty, you know, on the side and the rear, so, uh, appreciate if you give us an opportunity to. He builds a nice home. It's gated to bigger homes, just a lot of star homes going up in the county, and these are gonna be some bigger homes and some better rooftops, maybe to support stuff, like the fellows talked about before, the flag football stuff, so we'd appreciate an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Julie Estella.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I've lived on Betts Road for forty-six years, and I happen to live directly across from this project. So I don't live down the road, five miles away. I literally, my driveway is just across the. I literally, my driveway is just across the road from where I think by talking to the contractor, which he seems like a very nice gentleman, is that there might be three driveways across from my driveway. I moved out onto Betts Road when it was still a gravel road. And like I said, we've been there forty-six years and gradually seen fields, trees. On Betts Road, we have lost a lot of land. We have a subdivision down towards Ridgetop. We have more building up towards four thirty-one. I really appreciate the fact that you're using, that you are planning on big lots. I do appreciate that. But I don't appreciate the idea of having three driveways across from my driveway. It's going to be really hard to get out. Plus, if you know Betts Road very well, when we come out of my driveway and I turn left to go to Springfield, it's a blind hill. So you have to really time it to get out of my driveway. Otherwise, you have to be either quick or you've got to wait because it's a very blind piece of road. So I don't know how that will work with more traffic across the road from us. And yes, I hate to see countryside disappearing.
I really do.
But I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Hunter?
Resolution number one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-nine-zero. Jason Starling requests a rezon, one point eight-six acres of the twenty-three point zero-three acres from AG two to RP eighty, located at sixty-six thirty-five Highway seventy-six east. Tax map zero-nine-three, part of parcel two-four-two-point-zero-zero. Third voting district, planning commission recommended by a vote of five to zero.
Anyone here to speak on that issue? Okay, at that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring you back to the county commission. I'm going to start with A, from Ag two to R forty. Todd Bowinger on behalf of Tony Neal, Brent Neal, Mary Beth Hodge, and Brent Piles. I need a motion. I got a motion by Mr. Thompson. I need a second by Commissioner Moore. Now we're ready to ask Hunter questions.
So I guess my question is, the planning commission vote voted five to zero to not recommend this rezon. But I mean, RP eighty would kind of fit, right?
In the role designation, RP eighty would be more act than R forty is.
So I guess my question then would be back to the developer, the surveyor. I mean, that would still give you the ten building lots, you know?
Some are small, right?
Yeah, best I remember, and Cam can clarify if you'd like, but I believe six of the ten conformed to RP eighty and there were four outliers.
I think the ones closer to the road.
I believe it's one, two, three, and seven. Does that sound about right? I guess my question, I guess, can I address Cam?
No, you've got to keep it in the commission now.
I don't know that I'll ever answer.
Hey, Mr. Hart?
Oh, I just want to ask the same thing, why they turned it down?
The planning commission turned it down because it doesn't fit the land use map. Just what they were asked, when Amanda came on board as planner, they asked her to make her recommendations strictly on the land use map. So that's what she goes by.
Commissioner Randy Wilson?
Yeah, I've wrote about it and I'm well aware that property. I don't know if anything's been done for it for the last thirty, forty years to grow up. So it ain't like we're going to be taking farmland away for sure. So and like the guy said, he's got the road. I mean, he's got two fifty-seven, it's a main road. I don't see a big issue to this myself, but that's just my opinion.
Mr. Roble?
Yes, sir. You say land use, you're talking about the twenty-fourty roads plan?
That is correct.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it's too far out of that. How long has it been since it was updated or revised?
Whenever it was adopted, two thousand and three.
A lot of change in the county. And then the RP eighty question, I had the same question. I asked him about that prior to the meeting. And in order, what he told me was, I hope I represent it correctly, is that because of the infrastructure with the extra water underneath the state highway and some things like that, it would, the additional lots, it wouldn't, he couldn't get enough lots to make the numbers more accurate.
That's how I understood it also.
That's what you understood as well. And it looks, I think it was just the front lots that were a little bit smaller. I kind of agree with Commissioner Wilson. I see it like a good project gives us some variety in between county with some rooftops that are not just starter homes and it supports one of our local builders too.
Mr. Bubba Dars?
Hey, I'm understanding that when he goes on the road, there'll be construction on water lines on the other side, might be hydrants over, correct? So they'd have to meet this.
Yeah, he'd have to have the fire hydrants to meet.
The lady across the street would at least help her because it might bring her ass over and then of course she'll have a hydrant for safety there for in case there were needs for the fire service to be there, there'd be a water hydrant there. I go all about safety and that's one of the things, I'm talking about safety. I think the infrastructure there would help the houses around it.
Commissioner Stelfield?
Am I incorrect or correct on the fact that the properties around it are already zoned R forties?
There are some zoned R forties. If you look in the packet on the Stephanie's second page, it'll show you where his property is. And then the yellow around it are all R forty.
So basically, biggest part of it is R forty.
There's two beside it and two across the street from it that are R forty.
I understand that it was turned down because it didn't fit in the land.
The land use map, yes, Cam.
Have we not, in the last even few months, approved properties that were out of the growth plan? That, you know, outside of the growth plan because we felt like it was a good. I mean, let me just say it, have we not approved other properties that went against what our company from two thousand and three said? So why was this one not considered? I mean, even in planning and zoning, when the others were considered in planning and zoning? Or, you know, why would?
I don't know that planning and zoning has approved many that were not recommended, but here county has.
But we have approved other properties that were outside of that.
Land use map.
Land use map. And so it's not like it's the first time we've ever asked to do this.
Okay, I think Commissioner Stroud?
Yeah, I just want to question that about, the plan was adopted in two thousand and three. I don't even think we adopted the growth plan until like twenty eighteen or something.
Well, there's been numerous efforts to adopt the growth plan in the county. But, you know, we've tried the five-star deal. We've been around to all the cities and had these other hearings. Every city has got to sign off on it. And that's the problem, we've got two or three that won't sign off on it. You know, for whatever reason, maybe they got a good reason, I'm not taking up for them or against them. State don't recognize it until all the cities sign off on it. And we've got some cities that want to grow and they'll annex land to grow. And we've got some that don't say they'll grow.
Actually, we don't have.
Not by what the state requires.
We, I think, I mean, this is splitting hairs. But I mean, I thought we adopted a growth plan. I mean, I've seen the resolutions and the old notes on that.
Well, we've got it where we've tried to stink plants with R twenty was R twenty, R thirty, R thirty, you know. We tried, some people say maybe try to spot zone R twenty in the middle of R eighty, something like that. Hey, who's next here? Hogan?
Yes. We've been talking about the land plan. I never thought it to be the law. I thought it was a good recommendation for us to take a look at different things. And we're six tenths of a mile down the road. And to put a stamp on it saying, if this doesn't fit, we're not going to vote. That's a little strong. We've done other things in this commission to pass properties and I think this fits that.
You're six tenths of a mile from the urban growth boundary, which is different from the land use map.
Okay, I thought.
Urban growth boundary is the city limits of Springfield's urban growth.
What city is it?
Springfield.
It's their land exit, I imagine.
The land use map that we use is one that was in the growth plan that is all of the county what they wanted to see by twenty forty to stay.
And all the cities did not find out to that. And it's still a recommendation, a suggestion of what we can do as a commissioner. I think it'd be a disservice if we don't.
Mr. Thompson?
Oh, did I request to speak? I got you. Um, no, I'm good.
Well, let's go to Mr. Robinson.
I was looking at this and, which I know he's fixing to build some really nice homes out here and I know he does build some nice homes, but he's going to spend a lot of money putting water over here too. I mean, going underneath this road and stuff, that's six hundred and seventy-five foot of water and stuff. I mean, I think he's lighting up pretty good here to make a nice place.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
I guess my question is, how do we single out this property and not give them what they're requesting? Because you've got R forty everywhere else. And this is sitting on a main state highway, okay? It's not like it's sitting on Martin Chapel or sitting on a smaller rural area. I mean, this is sitting on the main feeder coming from here to Springfield. And I live out there, so I kind of like to see the rooftops so I can have a Springfield middle school. Sorry, I'm partial, I mean, a Springfield middle school.
Okay, anybody else got a question for Hunter?
Question.
Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes, if you're against, vote no. Eighteen-four, four against, I declare resolution passes. Hunter? Oh, it's me. I will go to Adam B, Ag two to RP eighty. Jason Starling, voting district three. I need a motion. I got a motion by Lee White. I got a second by Commissioner Moore. Questions for Hunter on this piece of property? Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes, if you're against, vote no. At twenty-two-four-zero, against, that resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hunter and Pam. Thanks for the work y'all do. Okay, the chair now recognizes Commissioner Bobby Capps, Budget Committee.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor. Honored guest, all commissioners. I would like to present to you resolution one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-nine-one.
Okay, I got a motion, of course, by Bobby and second by Commissioner Hogan.
This is a grant total of ninety-two thousand, twenty-three-one dollars. The sheriff's department, the majority of it is to help pay for training and related travels over time, health security. So it's laid out pretty clear what they're going to do.
Okay, anybody else got a question for?
Question, question.
Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes, if you're against, vote no. At twenty-two-four-zero, against, that resolution passes. Mr. Capps?
Yes, sir. Resolution one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-nine-two. This is a resolution, a resolution to eighty thousand dollars to underpay for two trucks, two dump trucks, two thousand twenty-seven freight tonne dump trucks for the county highway department. It's balanced, it's coming out of the capital fund.
Okay, I got a second by Commissioner Doc Martin. Any questions from? Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes, if you're against, vote no. At twenty-two-four-zero, against, that resolution passes. Okay, Commissioner Capps?
Sir, resolution zero-one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-nine-three. This resolution totaled sixty thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven. It's for improvements to the jail for HVAC and to public health and welfare. This fund will authorize train to proceed with phase two of replacing some out of date units.
Very out of date, I might add. Okay, I got a second by Commissioner Bubba Dars. Any more questions for Commissioner Capps on the train units for the jail?
Questions.
Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes, if you're against, vote no.
All right, we need to.
I got twenty-two-four-zero, against. I declare that resolution passes. Now, Commissioner Capps, you want to say something?
We need to suspend the rules for this particular motion in order to move this forward and get it funded. So we'll need to, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules just for this motion.
Okay, I got Commissioner Capps and a second by Commissioner Summers. Question being called.
This is.
Voice, okay. Now, you're voting to suspend the rules only, only. All in favor by suspending the rules, vote aye. Anybody opposed? So moved, the rules is suspended, we'll go back to the resolution now on the second reading. Anything you want to add, Commissioner Capps?
No, sir.
Okay, I got a motion by Capps and a second by Commissioner Ed Hebert. There's no question, question being asked? Question being asked? If you're for the resolution, vote yes, if you're against, vote no. At twenty-two-four-zero, against, that resolution passes. Mr. Capps?
Yes, sir. Resolution one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-nine-four. This is a resolution from the Board of Education distributing five hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars.
I already got a motion by Capps and a second by Commissioner Stacy Moore. This is state funds and federal funds, is that right? Okay, question?
Questions.
Question being called. If you're for this resolution for schools, if you're against, if you're against, if you vote no. At twenty-two-four-zero, against, that resolution passes. Mr. Capps?
Yes, sir. Resolution one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-nine-five. This is distributing three hundred thousand dollars of grant money for violent crime intervention.
Okay, I got a second by Commissioner Martin Morgan. Any questions for Mr. Capps? Question being called. If you're for this resolution for the sheriff's department? Vote yes, if you're against, vote no. At twenty-two-four-zero, against, that resolution passes. Mr. Capps?
All right, resolution one-one-one-seven-two-five-zero-nine-six. This is going to require a second reading. This is three hundred and thirty-two thousand, eighty-nine dollars and then a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This is improvements for the Robson County office and the highway department preparing a roof. We're going to add on, we're going to overlay a roof on top of another roof. It's got twenty years.
And the other money is from office space for drug court employees, which is all being redone on that floor since we had to remove everybody back to the courthouse. Okay, I got a second by Commissioner Bobby Hogan. No questions?
Questions.
Question being called. For this resolution on the first reading? Vote yes. Against it, vote no. At twenty-two, four, and zero against, that resolution passes. Mr. Cows?
Yes, sir. I want to suspend the rules for this motion and this motion only tonight. Have a second reading.
Yeah, I got a second by Commissioner Billy Ray Dars. Any questions, Bobby Cows, on this? All right, question being called. If you're for suspending the rules only this resolution? Vote aye. If you're against it, vote no. Anybody against? Sounds like the ayes do have it, okay? We are suspending the rules and voting on this resolution for the second time.
Voting this forward again.
Okay, I got a motion, Cows, and a second by Head Hebert. Of course, I don't guess you got any question, but questions be called. Question? You're for this resolution? Vote yes. Against it, vote no. Twenty-two, four, and zero against, that resolution passes on the second reading. Mr. Cows, you still up?
I am.
Have at it.
One, 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 seven, two, five, zero, nine, seven. This is a grant, state grant for twenty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars to the Mercy Management Search.
Okay, it's an all land security grant.
Yes.
I got a second by Commissioner Head Hebert. Anybody got any questions? Question being called. If you're for this resolution, vote yes. Against it, vote no. At twenty-two, four, and zero against, that resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Cows.
I would like to say one thing. I was at the state of the county address. And he did an excellent job.
I was struggling, let me tell you. Well, eighty people, I think, paid twenty-five dollars.
To see you.
No, they went for the meal. I know why they went. They wanted to hear about the schools. Everybody's still guessing where the next school's gonna be. I'd got to give Dr. Weeks credit. He kept it close to the chest, close to the chest. Chair now recognizes Commissioner Face Stubblefield representing the Highway Department.
Commissioner, our honored guest, bring to you resolution number one, 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 seven, five, zero, nine, eight. Resolution to establish a speed limit with signs on Homewood, Worsom Road.
I got a second by Commissioner Rommel. Question being called. You're for this resolution? Vote yes. Against it, vote no. While you're voting, anybody in the public, if you go to your highway superintendent who's elected by the people wants something done about a speed limit sign, you go there first and then they bring it to us, Cam. All right, I got twenty-two, four, and zero against, that resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Stubblefield. Wow, any old business, bring for the county commission. Any new business? Okay, here and none. I just want to say that don't forget Thursday night, we're looking at the, our development theme. And before I leave, I want to tell everybody to have a happy Thanksgiving. We've had a blessed year in Robson County. Blessed. Bobby Hogan, I'm gonna ask you to do the notice.
Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed and signed the application of those wishing to become a notary for that commitment. We elect all those who would like to be a notary for the county of Robson and the great state of Tennessee.
Okay, I got a second by Commissioner Rommel. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed those folks being noticed? Don't be it. They are noticed. All right? Stat. Think, Bubba, it's up to you now.
Make a motion to adjourn, sir.
We are adjourned. Everybody be safe.